Kelly.
Okay. Hello, and welcome, everyone. To our Wednesday, September sixteenth caucus of the Albany County Council. For the record, members present are council members love, Conti, O'Brien, Igo, Frederick, Doche, Farrell, Robinson, Johnson. I don't think I missed anyone. Staff present. What'd you say?
Alfredo's here.
Oh, I didn't see your face.
I can go down the list if you want, Kelly.
Yeah, yeah, will you do that because it's screen shifts.
Yep, so I the council members present are Kelly Kimbrough, Alfredo Ballerin, Councilman Johnson, Kathy Fahy. Let me see, Jamelle Robinson, Jenny Farrell, Joyce Love, Joy Igo, Jamelle Robinson, Judy Doche, Mike O'Brien, Richard Conti, Sonia Frederick, and Tom Howie. And then staff present is myself, Michelle Andre, Daniel Gillespie, the city clerk. And then we have two guests present with us, Daniel Kirk Davidoff and Zach Garofola.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
President Ellis is now entering.
Okay, along with Mr. Howie is also, it looks like he's connecting. Okay, all right, so just jumping into the agenda. We for our Monday, September twenty first meeting, we'll have the public hearings. We have two for ordinance nine sixty one twenty and resolution seventy two eighty one twenty. Those regarding the seventy six. We'll start off with that. Onto approval of minutes from a previous meeting. I'll be offering the September tenth council meeting minutes for passage. Next, on to consideration of local laws, local law. And introduction by council members Fay and Doche will be going to planning. It's regarding historic resource overlay districts and emergency demolitions and stabilization procedures. That will be going to planning.
That's Richard Conti.
Oh, that's okay, I'm sorry. Oh, Conti Fahy and Doche. That will be, Richard, did you care to say something?
What an odd trio.
Yes.
Yeah, this one also accompanies an ordinance that's on the agenda later. So they're kind of related. But one had to be done by local law because it relates to the Historic Resources Commission. And the other is done by ordinance because it relates to other parts of the code. It both of them deal with emergency demolition, the issue of emergency demolitions in historic districts. And it doesn't change the authority of the building department or the commissioner to act in emergency situations. What the thrust of this is, is trying to get at the issue of a role for the Historic Resources Commission in kind of oversight or involvement in this process. And, you know, policy where we're going right now, a lot of it is just they keep on happening. And there doesn't seem to be any real policy that involves HRC. So that's part of what I wanted to get this in as part of a discussion. And I think that there might be something else coming from the administration that relates to intended to relate to an effort to get owners to preserve buildings or stabilize whatever. I'm not sure what's coming down, but there might be something from the administration from what I'm hearing. So, you know, I wanted to get this in also as part of that conversation. See where we go. I do have some comments on it that I've received since intro. I do have some comments from Rick and Joy on it. And so I expect if as we move forward, we can have a, you know, more robust discussion on this topic.
Thank you, Mr.
But yeah, but since there is, as I said, since this, this, the ordinance is related. And you might put the ordinance might fit in the law committee. They somehow need to be kept together because they deal with the same topic. And then, you know, if you have something else coming down from the administration, I mean, it's a question as to where this this discussion should be going.
So why don't we just group them together in the law committee?
Or I mean, it is kind of like a planning issue too. So I don't, I'm just saying it can go either way. But I just wanted to keep the ordinance and the local law together in the same committee because they're related.
Okay.
Think about it.
Lanning, no, no, play, no, we'll just put them both in planning. I get what you're saying. Thank you.
If Joe's okay with that.
You okay, Joe? That's a. Okay, that was local law. And next, under consideration, the ordinances. We have ordinance by Mr. O'Brien, ordinance twenty ninety two twenty. That will be going to to planning. And that's a USDA ordinance is changing the zoning classification of ten fifty seven Washington Avenue to sixty one for mixed use. Neighborhood center to two family are two. Mike, it'll be going to planning, Mike, you care to?
Oh, yeah, these are two houses on Washington Avenue, which actually when we did the USDA, it was kind of my oversight because I didn't realize that they had, under the old zoning code, been classified as commercial office, even though they look nothing like a commercial office. And actually, there was a planning that this is where the stewards was going to go in addition to the empty bank building. And the planning board made a very good decision, which hadn't been written up yet. But their verbal decision noted that, you know, that the streetscape comports with them being residential. And it was an oversight that we just simply used the old zoning lines when we considered the mixed use neighborhood center. So it's putting it back to what they really are. And I didn't want to do it while the stewards' application was still pending. But the zoning board, the planning board denied stewards the application in what I think was a legitimate, well articulated way that it really is residential.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, that'll be going to planning. Okay. Okay, next, by council members Conti Fahy and Doche, ordinance twenty one ninety two twenty. It'll be referable to planning, Richard, you want to?
Yeah, this is the companion to the local law. I mean, the intention here is just to get certain information to the Historic Resources Commission. And also to like engineering reports related to emergency demos. And also to provide some additional information in the vacant building report that relates to the number of historic buildings that are on the vacant building registry and the and the number of demolitions, etc. So it's intended to get more information that's relevant and get that also the HRC.
Thank you, Mr. Conti, it's going to planning. Okay, next to ordinance is held on our active calendar. And on our agenda, there are items number eight, nine, and it's ordinance nine sixty one twenty and ten sixty one twenty. They both were went through the planning committee. Kathy, you care to speak about what, uh, about those ordinances and where they are? I can't hear you.
Sonia, you know, the only thing I'll say is that we did spend a lot of time, looked really carefully at this project because it's a, you know, it's a very large mixed use project, eight story building. And, I mean, it really looks like a spectacular project and had a great deal of support on our committee. And we spent a lot of time, a lot of meetings, looking very carefully at the project, visited the site. But Sonia might want to say more since it's her legislation.
Yeah, I'm having a little bit of connection issue, so hopefully you guys can hear me okay. But I just agreed, I think the planning committee did a good job at asking some thorough questions and making sure that they got comfort over the various, over the two pieces of legislation. So very excited to bring this to the council for a full vote. It is a very exciting project for First Ward and for the South End. Excited to see homegrown individuals try to invest in their community and make it better and provide a number of various services to the community as well. So hopefully, hopefully we see a good result, but I'm looking forward to it being up for vote on Monday.
Thank you, yes. And Ms. Love, you care to speak about one eighty shared? And I know it went through the committee, we were waiting on some, some seeker information from the planning department, and we received that day today via email. I don't know if JR, did you all get a chance to send that out for those seeker items?
Yeah, Michelle sent it out just about twenty minutes ago.
Okay, so that that one also is good to go.
Yes.
So that'll be up for vote on Monday, okay?
Kelly, can I just say one thing about both of these? You know, it's, we've got, these zoning changes, we're really looking carefully at the process and trying to make sure that it's a process that makes sense, especially when we're lead agency, you know, we make the final decision here. So I think there's been a lot of discussion about it, but we're going to be seeing more of these types of zone changes. And we want to have our ducks all lined up as far as who's doing what as far as the seeker process and and the zone change because they are quite involved. And everyone's been really helpful to to get that straightened out.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy. Okay, on to resolutions, consideration resolutions. We've got by Mr. Howie, resolution eight eight three ninety two twenty R. So congratulations, Dr. Malatris. Mr. Howie, you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
You know, Mr. Dr. Malatris was appointed, I kind of remember the number of, there's not that many chancellors. He's hands on. He went to the university at Albany. He has three degrees from there. I know a lot of us use the SUNY system, we have children that go to the SUNY system. And I thought it would be a nice gesture that we congratulate them. And, you know, there's going to be cuts in the SUNY system. As we all know, there's cuts everywhere. So I want to make sure that, you know, Albany is recognized as one of the flagship university centers. And, you know, that we appreciate his work.
Okay, Richard, do you have a?
Yeah, just a fun fact. Jim was actually once a sixth ward resident. And he was once a council appointee to the Community Police Relations Board.
Wow.
Good fact.
A very active member who sometimes was in the thorn in the side of the administration.
That's cool, that's cool. So that'll be a pass, all members, co sponsors, we have another hand up?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Mike, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I was just going to repeat because I remember I was on the Public Safety Council Committee when we interviewed him for the Citizen Police Review Board. How many years ago? I don't know, probably fifteen.
It was a while back.
Yeah, I'll.
You trying to get in your job?
Tom, is he gonna come down to accept it?
I don't know, I, well, where are you gonna go to? He'll do it maybe virtually, I could ask. Now, should we put in something? Should we modify it to acknowledge that he worked with the council or should we just leave it?
That would, I think that would be great, Tom, if we could.
Okay, so Kelly, can I?
I'll work with you, Tom, to amend it.
Thank you.
That'll be, that'll be a pass with all of us and sponsors.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I remember at the interview asking him, when I looked at all the things he was doing, if he would have time to do it. Now I see all the different things that he can handle, it's unbelievable.
Okay, that's cool. Okay. Next, under consideration resolutions by Mr. Johnson, resolution eighty four ninety two twenty. Resolution calling on the mayor to look into constructing a city owned community recreation center. Mr. Johnson, you with us?
Yes, I am.
You care to say a quick word?
Well, I mean, I think everybody that's on this call knows that I've, you know, spoken to this point, you know, from day one. And I think that the time is now, you know, to make sure that it is officially on notice of the expectations of the members of the second ward. And I just wanted to make sure that we took the steps to make sure that happened. So I don't think that a long conversation is needed, you know, in the times that we are and speak loud enough for itself, so thank you.
Okay. So it would normally I'd rather not send it to committee, I'd rather just have us consider it and and take a vote on on this. A member's comfortable with that, supporting or not supporting it? Yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll be trying to move that on Monday or up for vote on Monday. You need anyone? Okay, good, all right, so, okay, that was Mr. Johnson's. Next, on to another resolution by Mr. Johnson, eighty five ninety two twenty R. Resolution calling on the governor to review the clemency applications. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I'm sorry, my phone is going in and out. And just once again, speaking from a personal standpoint, my brother was arrested for something that he had nothing to do with. And, you know, just knowing that, you know.
You're cutting it, you're cutting out, Mr. Johnson. Hello, Mr. Johnson?
Well, I can, okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, did you hear anything I said?
Yeah, you kind of the start of it with your with your brother, then you kind of trailed off and disappeared.
All right, so I'm just speaking from a personal experience, you know, of having a brother that was charged with something that he had nothing to do and ended up being found guilty and did jail time. You know, I'm quite sure it's other cases that happen to other people's family members. And just with that personal knowledge, I think that the governor should be considering more cases because unfortunately, it's people that are in situations that they shouldn't have been in from the first. And then also, we have people that are putting themselves in a position to be considered for that type of consideration. So I think that it's necessary at a time where we're having examples of people being in jail for thirty three years for crimes that they didn't commit. So I think it will be healthy in those situations if we increase the number up to six.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson, any other questions or comments? I'd like to. Okay, Rich, Mr. Conti first and Mr. Che.
I guess my question was, what was the plan for this?
Personally, I, you know, I'd like to try to move it, but again, if members are not.
I mean, it's not, I don't, yeah, I don't know enough about the topic in terms of the number and the whether or not there's justification or not. I, that's part of my concern. I, if you want to move it, could I just make a request? That the third, whereas upward says the governor has not only failed to live up to his promises because I don't want to make a judgment there, if that sentence can be changed in some way.
Mr. Johnson.
So I think that the wording was put in there because he went on record saying something. And I don't think that, you know, we can have a discussion afterward. But I think that the intent of that line was to support the fact that we want to hold them accountable to what he said. Because if you run on something, if you say something to a voter, I think a voter has a right to follow up on it.
Okay, so that would be, no, you don't want to change it, correct?
Just, we're changing it because one person had a like, how do others, others feel about it?
Right, yeah, that's when you.
Well, if I can make a suggestion, I think Eric, that it would only involve changing a very little bit, but everything else, I think it makes a good and strong statement. It does compare him to how many commutations and have been given by his predecessor. So I guess if it just simply, I think it would make him his predecessor vote for it. If it just simply said Governor Cuomo lags behind his predecessors. Yeah, I think it'd be a strong statement, just like that. I mean, it would make me more comfortable, not that I'm afraid of Governor Cuomo, but
you know, in order to get people's support, you know, I will be open to changing that. But as I said, you know, if we, you know, and I will hold myself accountable to the same type of accountability. If we say something, people should be able to expect that of us.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Doche, you were.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask somebody to correct Governor Kerry, there's an E, R in that in that same whereas clause we were just talking about.
Anyone, anyone else? No? So, Mr. Johnson, if you're, did you say yes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so JR, can you, can you work on that and get it, you know?
I'll work with Mr. Johnson tomorrow and we'll get it ready for Monday as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next in our resolutions, resolution eighty six ninety two twenty, that'll be Ms. Farrell's and it'll be going to finance. It's a resolution certifying local adjustments to the adjusted base proportions, homestead and non-homestead. We've done this before. Any, any, any comments, we did this previously and.
I think we have to do this every year, so.
Right, yeah.
Kind of a process and we'll have a rousing discussion in one of our many, many finance committee meetings that we get to see each other so much.
Just quickly, this is an annual thing. And I am pretty sure I copied the language almost directly from last year's version of it, so it shouldn't be.
Just the numbers change, maybe possibly.
Right, yeah, I think the numbers did shift a little bit, but not by very much.
Okay. All right, it's finance, next on to resolution.
Can I just comment on that? I do think the resolution language could be clear. What has happened here is for many years, we were allowing the school district and certifying school district proportions that were different than what the city proportions were. And upon, you know, closer looking at the language and the statute and my question, why we were doing this? And working through some very long run on sentences, the school district eventually, and their attorney eventually acknowledged, they have no authority to adopt different proportions, base proportions than what the city has adopted. So, Brett, if you could just take another look at that in light of that. So there was a minor modification made, then subsequently that I still feel like it's not really clear. What we're doing is we're basically saying, this is what the base proportions are that the school district needs to adopt pursuant to those laws. And it left in some language there that kind of sounds like the school district is doing something different than what we've done. So, but that's it. It's like, it's pretty clear, this is a perfunctory thing now that neither the school district nor we can modify once we have adopted our base proportions. And that's, you know, there's agreement from corp councils office in the city and the school district and their attorney on that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, council member. And if you want to, do you want me to run some language by you before, before the committee meeting or we can discuss it?
Sure, yeah.
I know you and Marissa had had some discussions on on this issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the language is just kind of muddled. It's not clear what we're doing when we, when we look at it. And I think we could be clearer in it.
As for the real, the section of the real property tax law.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, so I'd be glad to take a look at something, you know, that you draft.
Thank you.
Good, okay. Okay, next, resolutions held, we've got number nine on the agenda. It's sixty eight seventy two twenty. It's on the finance calendar for today. That's the authorizing the city treasurer to enter into the cooperative liquid asset security system. That's the meetings after this, that'll be a part of, and that'll move pending the outcome of that.
We actually, no, we already met on this and it did pass through the committee with the recommendation.
Oversight that it wasn't added on the last active calendar, that was my fault.
Okay.
Which one are we talking about? I'm sorry.
Number nine.
Number nine. Resolution sixty eight seventy two.
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay, all right, next, under resolutions held, seventy two eighty one twenty by Ms. Frederick, that's resolution for the seeker review of nine ninety one twenty. Planning met on the fourteen positive recommendation, it's pending, the only thing pending is the public hearing at our meeting on Monday. It'll move based on the outcome of the public hearing, Richard.
Equally, so this, this was actually amended?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so my question, because when the public notice of the hearing went out and the notice, the the previous resolution is the one that was out there, which really didn't have anything in there. So is the.
On Facebook.
Okay, so you're changing that in terms of the hearing notice and the link in the hearing notice? So that it now reflects the update?
Yeah, I'm gonna amend the public hearing notice.
Okay, yeah, and can you also check, because the last time I checked, there seemed to be a broken link to something in terms of.
It was corrected, yep.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Next, the resolution cell seventy seven ninety one twenty, it's the Skyway. Uh, next, uh, the resolution sells 779120, uh, it's the Skyway. And of course, that's going to be discussed at, uh, at the finance meeting that follows, uh, our caucus. And pending that outcome, uh, we'll be moving it or not. Okay? Uh, and lastly, uh, under Res- Resolution held, the mine, it's mine, it's 829120R. It's reappointing Zach Garafalo, who's here with us. Zach, thank you, uh, for, uh, for attending the meeting. Can you just, uh, talk a little bit about the CPRB and, you know, the work and, and, uh, I mean, you, you got it.
Sure. Well, uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Kim Bro and, and everybody else. Uh, it's been an honor to serve on the police review board for the past, um, few years. And I want to thank you for, for placing your trust in me a few years ago and for your consideration and reappointing me, uh, for an additional term. This is a role that I take very seriously. And, um, during my tenure on the board, along with, with my colleagues, I think we've been able to breathe new life into the police review board and, um, really get out into and across our community, connect with faith-based organizations, uh, neighborhood associations, people who are typically disconnected from, uh, the civic process, uh, to inform them about the complaint process, um, and what they can do if, if they believe that there's been, um, an incident of misconduct. Um, we've increased diversity representation on the board. Um, you know, to be more reflective of the diversity of our community. Um, you know, and I think just in general, accountability and transparency, uh, in law enforcement has always been essential. Uh, you know, to, to the public trust, but at the, you know, the urgency of now amplifies that importance. Um, and so, you know, I, I'm hoping to, to continue working to build a strong oversight system. Um, and bring more people into, bring all constituencies, the police department, community members, um, et cetera, into, into this discussion. So I'm hoping we can, uh, continue that work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garafalo. Uh, any members have questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Fahy, go ahead.
I was just going, I was just going to make sure you saw, um, uh, Daniel Kirk Davidoff, who was a reappointment.
Right, he's after, yeah, he's up right, right next, right.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Anyone want to have questions or comments, uh, for Mr. Garafalo? No? Okay, uh, thank you for being with us. Thank you for the work you do. I, I know you're one of the, I mean, you all work hard, but I know you, you, you take this to another level. I know at one point you were on AcPAC and, eh, you know, doing the, the double thing. Uh, thank you.
I try and it's an honor to serve. So thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, you have a good night.
You too.
Say, okay, so, uh, Mr. Kirk Davidoff, you're here, uh, for your reappointment to the, to the Sustainability Committee. Um, we, I guess technically we are, we passed the, the resolution already, but, uh, members want to hear and get updates from you. So, um, have at it.
Still me? There we go. Yep, I had to unmute myself. Thanks. Uh, yeah, thanks. So I've been the secretary for the last, uh, year and a half or so. Uh, so, you know, just, that's a, a, a fair chunk of my time, just making sure the notes are in good shape and getting them, uh, passed around and edited and so on. Um, in addition to that, I've been on the outreach committee and the energy committee. We've been, I, I think, working pretty, pretty well, uh, in, uh, in making some decent progress on the energy subcommittee, particularly working, uh, to make the case for upgrading the city's, um, building codes to, uh, reflect the, um, uh, the, the, the stretch code that, um, NYSARDA has made available to cities. We've, uh, you know, we worked hard to give good advice on the, um, uh, transition to LED lighting on the streets. It was accomplished, uh, a little while ago. And, uh, we're, you know, now, uh, going through a long list of, uh, items designed to, to really, you know, get the city, uh, on, uh, ready for the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act and, uh, and, you know, understand the kind of, uh, regulatory and, um, energy price world we're going to be living in under that and trying to think big about ways the, uh, city could work to reduce, uh, uh, carbon emissions from housing and transportation. Uh, let's see, um, yeah, I actually sat in on the, uh, today on the Climate Action Council Subcommittee on, on, uh, on electric power, which was, which was pretty interesting. It's great to see that starting up and, uh, you know, just, uh, there's big changes are afoot in the way we use energy and, uh, and move around and heat our houses over the next 15, 20 years. And, uh, we need to think about what that looks like at the city level, how, you know, if the state's commitments imply that, um, there's going to be a very rapid shift over to electric cars, for example. So what does that look like in a dense city where people don't have parking spaces? And what are, can we think creatively about how to make charging opportunities available at the lowest possible cost? Something that's been on my mind for a while, uh, and thinking about, uh, ways of, uh, involving the city and decision-making around, uh, Empire State Plaza's energy use seems important as well. Uh, you know, when we think about, we need to come up with a low-carbon, um, system to keep that big space heated and cooled in the summer and winter. You know, are there synergies that could be applied to surrounding areas that might help provide residential and businesses, uh, you know, heating and cooling needs, uh, office systems like that? So those are the kinds of things we're trying to, trying to keep in mind and stay ahead of. Um, we've, uh, been discussing some of the issues that have come before the council and, uh, I've been really interested in, reaching out to folks in, uh, in and around the city who have concerns around, uh, dense development to try and see what kind of, I mean, that, that's, that's a win-win from a climate and community point of view, as far as I'm concerned. But I know there are people who, who have, uh, you know, have, have concerns about it and trying to think about, ways to make that as, uh, as successful and broadly popular as possible seem important to me personally. So that's something I've had an interest in. Sorry, that was a bit rambling. Um, I wasn't sure exactly what to prepare here. But if you have, uh, questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Ms. Fahy?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, uh, you know, thank you so much for your service, Daniel. We really appreciate it. This, uh, committee has only been around, well, I guess it's been around since 2014 now, so. But you're doing great work and we really appreciate all, all the efforts that you're putting into it.
Um, I'll add one more thing. I, I had a really great conversation with, uh, Willie White at, uh, Department of Youth and Workforce Services, uh, and realized that I hadn't been aware of the collaboration that their, that department has with Cornell, uh, in terms of some energy retrofit training for, um, you know, city, city, for youth and people seeking employment in the city. Um, that's, that's a really big deal. There are very strong, um, motivations to improve building efficiency all around the state under the CLCPA. And, uh, you know, in, in talking that over with some people on the energy committee, the, the demand for labor to do that is really, really substantial. Like, we actually, we're going to seriously, uh, improve building efficiency of our, you know, legacy homes and, you know, existing infrastructure. It would be, it would be like adding the entire workforce, uh, of the building trades over again to do a serious job with, uh, building efficiency. So, you know, we'll see what kind of commitments, uh, financing is available for that moving forward. But to the extent that it is, it's a big opportunity for youth and employment and we should be thinking about that. Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Ryan.
Uh, now, uh, the city has a pest management board, which is kind of a subset of general services. And it is at least half vacant and has been for quite a while. I thought there was some discussion of rolling that over into, uh, your committee. Uh, but I haven't actually seen that happen. Are you aware of, uh, whether that's even been entertained? I would recommend it.
I, it, it hasn't been discussed in our committee as far as I know. Tell, tell me again the name of that one, that.
Pest man.
Pest management board. Okay, okay.
It was created by about eight years ago. It functioned for a while, but, uh, in fact, I couldn't even, other than Scott Gallup, you can't tell you who's, who's on it now because it kind of went dysfunctional. I mean, Scott is, Scott is very reliable. He's our pest management certified guy for the city. And pretty much everybody went along with whatever he said. But if, if we're gonna have a pest management board, it might as well work. And I see the environment that the best work in is your committee. So that had been my suggestion, but quite frankly, I never heard anything else about it for the past year.
Okay, uh, thank you. I'll take that back, uh, to the committee. That's an interesting, uh, suggestion, uh, Councilmember O'Brien. I think we, um, we, we've been interested in, uh, having a stronger, uh, you know, housing and, uh, built environment. Uh, portion of our work. And, uh, we've had some folks who are interested in constituting a subcommittee to work on those issues. So I can imagine that filling, you know, fitting in reasonably well. Um, and also that, you know, uh, Scott Kellogg would certainly be interested in talking about, you know, any kind of, uh, environmental concerns around pest management decisions, uh, as well from the point of view of, you know, urban agriculture and, so, so that's, that, that's a great suggestion. Thank you. I'll, um, I will take it back to the committee and we'll look into it.
Thank you.
I mean, it's, it's, it's up to you and the city. It's not our, our call, but we'd be, we'd be happy to, to learn more about the issues.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Let's say, if not, I will be adjourned, uh, because there's, we have the, uh, finance committee meeting after immediately following this. Thank you, Mr. Kirk Davidoff. Uh, I mean, you guys do a lot, uh, and you, you said a lot, but that, that's why we wanted you here. So you can, you, you know, pass that information along. So, so thank you. Okay?
Uh, just a clarification point, um, maybe JR, you can help with this. Can we stay on this for the finance committee meeting or do we have to go into a new Zoom?
New Zoom because we noticed it with the Zoom, Zoom link.
Got it.
So, uh, once we adjourn, I'll boot everybody out and then open the other one.
Okay, we're adjourned, so, uh, but, uh.
I'll see you soon.
You guys in a minute. How we going, everybody?